Denver Water, feel free to speak at this microphone or at the podium, whatever you're most comfortable with.
Thank you Commissioner Jones, members of the Boulder County Commission. I think what we're going to do is we will speak during the presentation from here and then if you have questions, just for facilitating the discussion, we'll probably speak from the table. My name is Mike King. I am the Chief of External Affairs for Denver Water. With me today, on behalf of Denver Water, is our General Counsel Jessica Brody. She will talk to the narrow legal question that Commissioner Jones just articulated. Jeff Martin is the Gross Reservoir Expansion Project Engineer and he will talk about the broader aspects of the project itself and some of the outreach, stakeholder engagement, and environmental mitigation that we have done as part of this project as well. Briefly, on background, Denver Water supplies water to 1.4 million people in the Denver metro area. We serve the city and county of Denver and we have 20, a little over 20 distributors adjacent to Denver that we also provide water to. Denver Water turned 100 years old last year. Denver Water's history has been well documented by Boulder's own CEO Patty Limerick. Ditchin' Time lays out the interesting background of Denver Water. Our history has been, at times, difficult. The first 70 years of this agency, Denver Water was the big dog in the state. Denver Water acted like the big dog. They went out and got water, developed the water, and did what was in the best interest of the people, the city and county of Denver, which is and was our mission. But something happened, and that was what was documented by Professor Limerick. In the early 1990s, a gentleman by the name of Chips Berry took over at Denver Water. And he understood that going forward, Denver Water needed to be a different kind of agency. Yes, we needed to fulfill our mission, but that also would include a sense of collaboration and commitment to the communities where we operate, a place where we have our facilities and draw water from, that we have an obligation to work in collaboration with those communities. Chips also is adamant that we also are stewards of the natural resource, the environment itself. And so, understanding that our mission is still to provide clean, safe, and affordable water, we do so with a different ethic. And we come to you today with something that I think is really kind of unusual, very unusual. We know that development of natural resources in Colorado is always subject to contentious discussions. No more so than in water. Water is the natural resource from which all others literally flow. We are here today because we have a couple of needs that this reservoir expansion would further facilitate. First, as we know, Colorado continues to grow. Some of us may not like that, but the reality is, is that people continue to come into our gorgeous state. We have to continue to be able to provide those folks, and we want to do that in environmentally responsible manner. We think that growing up within our boundary, our service area, is the responsible way to do that, and we are committed to working with the city and county of Denver to make sure that growth goes up and not out. We also have a structural imbalance in our system. The vast majority, 80%, give or take, of our water comes from the South Platte System. The gross reservoir exists on the north end, drawing water from the Williams Fork and the Fraser Valley. That water, in addition to being additional yield to facilitate the growth, that's important for us because it provides redundancy in the event that we see events like the Hayman Fire in the early 2000s that can effectively take part of our system out at any given time. So we come to you today with collaboration is our, part of who we are. We come with the Colorado River Cooperative Agreement. I know you're aware of that. It was truly a transformational agreement about how Denver Water acts as a citizen of the state and works with our communities. We have the support of many towns on the western slope, including those most directly impacted by this project. We also have our commitment to the environment. Now, we understand that there is more to do relative to enhancement of the environment and mitigation where we can't completely absolve all the impacts, but we also have the support of Trout Unlimited, we have the support of Western Resource Advocates, and we have the support of the American Rivers. We're very proud of that. That would not have happened 30 years ago at Denver Water. So we're here to make our case, we're here to have the discussion about whether 1041 applies to the gross reservoir expansion, but we're also here to listen. We understand that more needs to be done with environmental minimization of adverse impacts, looking for opportunities to improve the environment where those exist, and all of this is done in the context of our fundamental mission to serve our customers. What I want to assure you is regardless of the outcome of this hearing, Denver Water's commitment is to continue to work with Boulder County, with this commission, with the impacted citizens in the area of gross reservoir, as well as our continued obligation to work with the impacted communities and environment on the western slope. With that, I would like to turn it over to Jeff Martin to talk through a little bit of the background and some of our efforts on behalf of stakeholders.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Thank you for having us. First, a thank you to staff. We've been working with Boulder County staff for years on this project, and we've gone through several different land use permitting and zoning, and the staff's been really professional and great to work with, so thank you for that. I'm Jeff Martin. I'm the Program Manager. I've been working specifically on the gross project now for about six, seven years with Denver Water, and so through that, I've had the opportunity and privilege to work through a lot of our issues and meet a lot of stakeholders and the community through here. So I'm going to talk a little bit about why this is important to Denver Water and then what we've done in the recent years on listening and changing the project to try to minimize as much impacts as we can, which is reflective of the collaboration and really the transformative Denver Water that Mike was talking about on what we see as success moving forward. So with that, it really starts with the challenge of imbalance. And so what I brought up here is Denver Water's watershed, and we basically have two watersheds that we pull off of. The South Platte, which is the very large highlighted area on the south, and a really small area, which is called the Moffett Collection System, or what we call our north system. And so this is an issue, and our challenge is the imbalance here of what we have. As Mike said, 80% of our water is on the south and 20% is on the north, but even more imbalance is our storage. 90% of our storage is on the south and 10% is on the north, and we're looking to address that, okay? And so why is that imbalance important? Imbalance is important because of the risk that Denver Water has when we do that. So, you know, we had, the Hayman Fire happened right at Cheeseman Reservoir, right in the middle of our South Platte watershed. It impacted our ability to deliver water. Buffalo Creek Fire ran right outside of Bailey, one of the fastest-moving wildfires in Colorado history, moved seven miles in a matter of hours. And once we had a precipitation event after that, that again clogged our system. So we know the real risk is here, we're aware of it, we know it's coming, we're looking to address it. We know that we have this imbalance, and so when we're looking forward, we're trying to solve this, not only with creating storage, but with the gross reservoir expansion project. So with the imbalance, we also know Colorado is an increasing population. In 2018, we're the seventh-largest increasing-population state in the country, according to the state demographer or the state water plan also the Colorado Water Congress put out. We are looking at another 5 million people by 2050. So we are planning for that, we have been planning for that, we know it's coming, we are prepared for that. And so when we look forward, making sure that we have the water where we need it, of that population increase, 85% live in the South Platte drainage, so from basically Colorado Springs or just north of the Palmer Divide, all the way up to our border with Wyoming, that's where our residents are and that's where the population's going to increase. And so we have to prepare for that as Denver Water. So looking at the response, you know, like many organizations, we're taking a portfolio approach. How do we meet this need that we anticipate? So again, you know, specific numbers, 34,000 acre-feet is what we anticipated needing. And so how do we go about meeting that demand? So our first, where we put a lot of our efforts, a lot of our resources, has been towards conservation. We believe conservation was the first thing we needed to tackle with our customers. We've done a really good job. We're using 20% less water with 15% more population than when we started our conservation efforts. We have, through our campaign, been nationally recognized on the reduction of water, as well as our public outreach on use only what you need, and how we have encouraged our customers to use less, and our customers have responded. And so we've done quite a bit in conservation, we're proud of that. We've also instituted a recycled or reuse water system. It's what we call Purple Pipe. So the pipe up in the photo on the bottom is called Purple Pipe. That's a reuse. We're one of the only watering municipalities, pure water providers, that treat water and then we reuse it in our system for city parks, the zoo, industrial uses. This is also how we're going to meet our future demand and how we're looking into the future. But with that, as we move forward, new supply is also part of our portfolio. And so as we moved into this process, we've, we're looking at creating new supply on the north system specifically. And so the photo up here is the Moffett Collection System, EIS. This was the final environmental impact statement. I'm going to pause here for a second. Going into this process in 2003, as Mike alluded to, our board gave our executives direction, as well as staff direction, saying, if we go forward with a water supply project and we're going to meet the needs that we need to meet, we need to be transformative, we need to change, we need to be collaborative, we need to make environmental stewardship our mission, and then we need to show through our actions how we're doing that. And I think through some of these pieces, we'll be able to show that. So we took 14 years from the notice of intent until the environmental impact statement was released, actually 11 years, 14 years, until the record of decision was released on that. The reason that took a long time is because we had a lot of stakeholders at the table. We paused, we went back, ground canny, asked us to go look at the Fraser River temperatures again. We did that. That paused, delayed our process, and through that process, we came out with an environmental impact statement that thoroughly categorizes our project. And so as we move forward, we hope we can not only, you know, lean on that and be able to articulate the benefits that we're providing through the project, but then through the partnerships which are not required through the EIS or the 404 permit. These are partnerships that Denver Water has gone out and made in order to be transformative and to have a different water future for the future and collaborating with the entire state. So this project, in and of itself, is not just about raising gross dam, it's actually about a different water management that Denver Water has committed to with Grand County and the other signatories on the Colorado River Cooperative Agreement. The history of gross is somewhat important. What I have, or is very important, excuse me. So what I have up here is a section on the left. The orange is gross dam as it sits today. It's a 340-foot-tall dam. When it was originally designed, it was designed for a raise, 120-foot raise in two sections, a 40-foot raise followed by an 80-foot raise. The image on the right is a map that was filed with Boulder County in 1946. This shows the full build-out of gross reservoir, all the way up to elevation 7,400. We plan to store water up to elevation 7,406, six feet higher than what was originally intended, and the purpose of that is the environmental pool. And the environmental pool is 5,000 acre-feet of storage, which is going to be behind gross dam for use by the city of Boulder and the city of Lafayette, and for the direct benefit of South Boulder Creek. South Boulder Creek has issues with native stream flows. It can go low, however, it's a good fishery. And we're looking at, where we did partner through an IGA with the city, with those two cities, to make sure we could put water in the river when there isn't water, and so we can provide an aquatic benefit. So when we move forward, and what we're trying to do, and what's interesting, is that through the EIS, the full raise of gross was determined to be the LEDPA, the Least Environmentally Damaging Practical Alternative, and then again, through the FERC's Supplemental Environmental Assessment, finding, you know, no findings of significant impact with regard to environmental impacts. And so when we look at that, we, this wasn't what our destiny was when we went in. We went into a NEPA process, open with alternatives. In fact, when we built our hydropower plant in 2006, we thought we would raise gross reservoir 40 feet, but through the process itself, through the alternatives analysis, we ended up with a full raise, which is also what the environmental community in the 90s suggested to Denver Water as a way for a new source and the least environmentally damaging alternatives that ought to be considered by Denver Water. And this is exactly what we did. In fact, we followed other steps that the environmental community has laid out for us as well, in a plan that was given to Denver Water back in the 90s. And so we are, we are listening to what's being provided to us as feedback, and then we're taking that, and we've really transformed and changed how we've gone through this process. In doing so, we've really made a lot of partners along the way, and the reason we've made the partners is not because we showed up and said we were going to use the water. We showed up and we said, we're listening. How can we, how can we change how we're doing business and still meet our objective of being able to have a secure water future for Denver? And so as we did that, we created a lot of partnerships. So the organizations on here are either part of the CRCA, the Colorado River Cooperative Agreement, which has 30-some entities who participated, 14 signatures that helped put this in. It's made commitments. The CRCA is important. The CRCA, Denver Water, committed to not growing outside of our boundaries. We committed to growing up. We're not going to go sprawl. That's, we drew a line around our service area, and that's our service area. But we still have a need, regardless if we're not, you know, moving out, to be able to provide a secure water future to our customers. So with that, we also changed how we were going to do water management. We worked with a lot of different groups through that process. And in doing so, we are recognized by some of our current state leaders. All five past governors have endorsed our project, have given endorse and have provided that feedback through the permitting process. And also, we've been recognized by national environmental groups. So Trout Unlimited gave Denver Water the Water River Stewardship Award in 2017. This was because of our efforts of working with Trout Unlimited and Grand County to really provide a platform, learning by doing, to make sure that we are bettering the Fraser River. So to make sure that as we go forward, the Fraser River will be healthier than it is now. The Fraser has issues with temperature, so we looked, okay, how do we change how we operate to make sure that we can provide a benefit to the Fraser, keep the river cool, keep the trout healthy? Some of the projects we have up here is a Fraser Flats project. I'm sorry if I wasn't speaking close enough. The Fraser Flats project was a learning-by-doing project. Denver Water participated in this. We improved a mile of stream on the Fraser River. Basically, the river had turned wide over the years, and we helped create what's called riffle pools and aquatic habitat. In doing so, our biomass, our trout biomass increased four times within weeks after creating this new project, and we put it to beneficial use for the public, opened it up, and now it's getting actually quite a lot of fishing visitors to that area. And so these are the types of projects we're looking to partner with Trout Unlimited and Grand County to do. We didn't have to do this. This project wasn't required by us to participate in, but we're committed, and through our actions, we wanted to be a part of it, we wanted to be a significant part of it and move forward. We've done the same with the Williams Fork River Restoration in Grand County, as well as South Boulder Creek Restoration. And then in the future, we look at new benefits, once gross is online, for the CRCA commitments and additional water for the Fraser River, addition of the 5,000 acre-feet for South Boulder Creek, and the environmental pool that we're going to store. And then finally, some of the other commitments with CRCA. So in going forward, gross, it's a different way for Denver Water to do water management, and our partners will attest to that. We, you know, we can provide, or we have some partners that will, you know, make comments on that of how we've changed and how we've been collaborative on making sure that we're not just looking for Denver Water's interests, but we're looking for the environment's interest and our watershed's interest. So I'm going to move to community engagement. So this is something I've been quite involved with for the last six years. This is the first time we've formally been in a meeting or presenting to the commissioners. The last time, there was a specific hearing or comment on this was in 2013. And at the beginning of 2013, I was here, and I listened to a lot of feedback and comments that we received. One of the comments from the community, as well as from the commissioners, is that we're not present, and that we haven't, we haven't done enough outreach, we haven't talked to the neighbors, we haven't been there. We took that to heart, and we've really changed what we've done. Through that, we have, we have really ramped up our availability. We have been, I personally, been at open houses at Coal Creek Community Center. We have had events at the north shore at Boulder. We built a yurt that we staff regularly during the summer, that is furnished with project information and available, and we post those hours on our website. We create a website to provide information out there. We go to the coffee shop every week to have opportunity for community and neighbors to talk to us and provide us feedback on what they may see as a successful project. We've attended the Mountain Fest and some other things. So we have proactively moved into a different way of listening, and that's really paid off on some changes, and I'm going to cover some of those. And the point being that we've only begun to make minimizations to the project. We intend to keep collaborating and keep minimizing the potential impacts or the inconveniences and the disruptions that we know will occur, and we're not hiding from those. We actually want to address them and make meaningful changes. So in 2018, we ramped up alone. We spent 600 hours at the yurt or the coffee shop. We had many presentations. We made contact with a lot of people, either locally in Boulder County or the community up there. We've listened, we've cataloged that, we've taken that feedback, and we've looked on how do we make changes as we go forward, and we've implemented changes. And I'll talk about a couple that are, there are some of our larger changes, and we have smaller changes we're looking at making as well. So as we, towards the, towards the, last year in 2018, we also sent out a survey. And so we hired a private consulting firm to handle a survey for us. We sent out over 2,000 surveys to neighbors around gross. We received over 500 back. That's quite a high response rate and tells you that folks are passionate and want to provide feedback on this project, and we really appreciate it because we took it and we listened. So generally, the feedback we receive falls into two groups. One's environmental, and the other is construction-related impacts. And so when we look at these, the first one on the depletion of watersheds, you know, I think we just need to be able to tell our story better. We are working really hard on making sure that the Fraser River and the Colorado is better off after this project than before, what it could be, the risk that it has. We certainly understand the tree removal is a sensitive area and that we're continuing to work with it. We have some consultants working on us with how to look at this. I'll note that we have transferred more land than we're going to inundate to the Forest Service and the upper watershed up near the Toll property for preservation with the Forest Service. That was compensation to the Forest Service for their lost land and to create habitat that's protected for the future. And then when we look at construction-related concerns, and that's what I'm really passionate about, trying to reduce, because I know what it's like to live in a rural area. So we're looking at, you know, what's the disruption from the traffic? So our primary concern is safety, and that's our paramount number guiding critical success factor on the project from our board down, is a safe project. So we're looking at, how do we, how do we make sure it's safe? How do we minimize the disruption to those that use Highway 72 as their main thoroughfare? How do we reduce the disruption on gross dam road? As well as the associated items or impacts that come from construction, such as noise and light pollution? And so we're looking at those as well. So to talk specifically about some of the transportation issues we did, when I started the project and the EIS, it assumed that we would truck all the sand to the site to make the concrete. Well, it was a large amount of trucks. And so when I say a large, you know, it could be 20,000 tractor-trailer trucks. And so one of the things we did is we looked, how do we make that onsite? How do we reduce the truck traffics? How do we, how do we get, you know, a little more innovative on how we look at this project? And what we did is we found a way that we can, we can make sand out of rock through additional processing, and we can reduce our truck traffic by 75%. So that was one of our first moves. And so then the second is, we still have trucks that we need to bring up to the dam, cement, and some other things. So how do we make sure to minimize those impacts? So we've made commitments with school districts that we would not travel at the time that school buses are traveling and will avoid commuting time, either up or down the canyon. Further, we're looking at different ways that we can optimize how we bring traffic in and out. Part of our survey that we had out asked, how many days a week would you prefer to see trucks, you know, more or less, either cram it or spread it out? There's pretty mixed results there. They generally, what we saw from the feedback was try to get it in as little possible. So we're trying to figure out ways that we can haul on as few a days a week as possible. And so those are some of the innovations we're looking at continuing doing as we go forward. So the next item, and this came directly out of the 2013 hearing too, and so in 2013, there was a north shore resident who provided a comment and asked, you know, Denver Water, why are you quarrying in the area of the EIS? I don't get it. Why don't you quarry beneath the reservoir surface? And so the photo I have here is a rendering of what was approved in the EIS. This is the quarry. There's almost 200 feet that would be exposed afterwards in the view shed. This hasn't been fully reclaimed. This is right after we would be done. But we took that to heart, we listened, and we thought, okay, you know, what can we do? So we did some additional investigations in and around our site to look at where could we move the quarry? And so now, up here, this is where we were just looking at where the quarry would have been, and we moved the quarry to a different area. This is where our boat launch area is. And we moved it for the primary purpose that when we inundate that area, that it'll be either inundated completely or almost inundated, a very small amount of it will be out. So we took that feedback, we heard it here, we've heard it from others as we listen around, and we acted on it. And that's what we intend to keep doing, is we collaborate with our neighbors and our stakeholders in Boulder County on how do we, how do we really reduce these impacts, minimize them to a real beneficial, tangible, credible level? So moving on, I just want to end with a couple things. This is the 2013 flood, and the bottom left-hand corner is Crescent Lake Road in Boulder County, and a culvert failed, and there were 14 residences back on this road who had no access out. And one of them thought to give Denver Water a call and ask for help. And so that's our excavator up there, working on that. In the end, once we dug into it, the culvert failed. We started the process, we started fixing it, we were going to finish it. We ended up renting a dump truck, we rented a compactor. We spent several weeks up there fixing this. It was a big project. This embankment's nearly 15, 20 feet tall over this culvert. We spent a lot on this, and we did it because we were asked for help, and once we started, we were committed to finishing. And that's who we are. And so, you know, and I think Ed, Ed, who was one of the homeowners who contacted us up there, was really grateful, you know, said it was one of, one of the highlights of his life, being helped by an entity without asking for anything in return. So, you know, we did this because somebody asked for help, and so this is the commitment we have, this is who we are, this is what Mike described as well, and it's what we intend to do as we go forward. So to finish, Jim Lockhead, our CEO, you know, has really set the course for us through our board on really who we are and what success looks like. And for us, success isn't just getting the project done. Success is a new future for Denver Water, how we manage water, being environmental stewards of the precious resources that have been entrusted to Denver Water. It is working with our community and keeping our commitments to our neighbors. And in the end, it's really about reducing the impacts as much as we can to our neighbors. We are invested in making sure that this is a safe project and that at the end of the day, when we feel that hopefully the impacts that we portrayed beforehand, we're able to mitigate and reduce to as much as possible. So with that, Jessica Brody's going to go through the zone land use exemption issue.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jessica Brody. I'm the General Counsel at Denver Water. It's my job tonight to talk about the legal argument, the issue that we're here to discuss with you today. And while we do disagree with staff's interpretation of 1041 as it applies to this project, I do also want to thank them for their professionalism, courtesy, and careful consideration of these issues. When the Colorado Legislature enacted HB 1041, it exempted from the 1041 process, whoops, development and activities on land that was already zoned by the local government for the use contemplated by such development or activity at the time that 1041 was enacted in 1974. Specifically, CRS 24-65.1-1071C2 states that this article shall not apply to any development in an area of state interest or any activity of state interest which meets any one of the following conditions as of May 17, 1974. And the specific condition applicable today is under paragraph C, the development or activity is to be on land "The development or activity is to be on land which has been zoned by the appropriate local government for the use contemplated." Boulder first adopted a zoning resolution, as far as I can tell, in 1944. It has undergone many changes over the years. For purposes of analyzing whether the zone land exemption applies to this particular project, the key question is what zoning was in effect in Boulder County in May of 1974, when HB 1041 was enacted? Your job today is to interpret the zoning code in place at that time to give effect to your predecessor's intent. At the time, the property at issue was in a forestry district. In general, uses permitted in forestry district included such things as family homes, vacation cabins, schools, parks, recreation areas, and certain public utilities such as mains, lines and underground facilities. The forestry district is silent regarding dams and reservoirs. They are neither expressly permitted nor are they prohibited in forestry zone districts under the zoning code that was effect in May of 1974. Also of note, per amendment approved in March of 1972, drilling, quarries, mining, sand and gravel operations and similar extractive land uses were permitted, subject to special review. But in addition to being in a forestry district, Gross Dam and Reservoir are also in a floodplain. So why is that relevant? In August of 1969, your predecessors adopted a comprehensive floodplain zoning amendment. It's important to understand the context for their actions in August of 1969. Some in the room may recall that in May of 1969, Boulder County experienced one of the worst floods in its history. As documented in Sylvia Pedem's book entitled Boulder's Floods and Flood Management: Past and Present, she noted that, quote, "Gross reservoir captured the entire runoff generated above the dam, preventing what would have been much greater flooding in South Boulder Creek Valley." This dam provided protection for the community below. And it was just a few months later that the county adopted the floodplain zoning amendment. As stated in Section 18.5, Paragraph 1, the purpose of these amendments was to, quote, "promote public health, safety and general welfare, to minimize flood losses in areas subject to flood hazards and to promote wise use of the floodplain." That is what your predecessors had in mind when they adopted the provisions that we're going to examine. Floodplain is also defined as, quote, "the relatively flat or lowland area adjoining a river, stream or watercourse, ocean, lake or other body of standing water, which has been or may be covered temporarily by floodwater." For administrative purposes, the floodplain may be defined as the area that would be inundated by the standard project flood or the maximum probable flood. Flood regulatory area is also a defined term in the code amendments adopted in 1969. Flood regulatory area is defined as that portion of the floodplain subject to inundation by the 100-year flood. Its width is determined by the 100-year flood. Its length or reach is determined by natural bounds. This equals the intermediate regional flood is defined by the Corps of Engineers. Section 18.5, Paragraph 3.4 describes the allowed land uses within the flood regulatory area. It states, quote, "The following open uses shall be permitted within the flood regulatory area, to the extent that they are not prohibited in particular by any underlying zoning category." Again, the key word here is "shall." These are permitted uses. Subparagraph 4 lists among the allowed uses, "utility facilities such as dams, power plants, flowage areas, transmission lines, pipelines and water monitoring devices." I'll also note that Subparagraph 5 also lists "open pit mining for the removal of topsoil, sand, gravel or other minerals as a permitted use within the flood regulatory area." So why did your predecessors adopt these comprehensive floodplain zoning provisions? I have to think it was because dams, and Gross Dam in particular, protected the community from even more severe flooding in 1969, just as Gross Dam did again in 2013 and just as it can during future flood events. So to sum up our argument, CRS 24-65.1-107 exempts from the 1041 permit process development and activities on land that was zoned by the local government, in this case Boulder County, for the use contemplated by such development or activity, in this case a dam, at the time HB 1041 was enacted. Following the 1969 flood, the Boulder County Board of Commissioners adopted specific zoning for floodplains and made a considered decision to expressly allow dams in flood regulatory areas to the extent such uses were not prohibited by the underlying zoning category. The underlying zoning category, in this case, the forestry zone district, did not prohibit dams. Thus, we ask you to conclude that the zone land exemption applies to the Gross Reservoir Expansion Project. I'd like to take a few minutes to address some of the counterarguments you might hear, since I'm not sure if I'll have another opportunity to do so. In particular, I want to spend a few minutes talking about a statement in staff report that the applicable zoning map, the 1965 zoning map, does not show the area of the dam and reservoir within the flood overlay district. I want to be clear, there's no factual dispute, as far as I know, that Gross Reservoir is in the floodplain. In fact, it's currently mapped in the official regulatory floodplain zoning for Boulder County as a floodway. This is from your official map. I believe staff's reliance on the 1965 map is misplaced for two reasons that I want to spend a few minutes going over with you. First, if you take a look at Section 3.1, or excuse me, Paragraph 3.1, the flood regulatory application provision, it states that the provisions of this section apply to all floodplains of rivers, creeks and streams in the unincorporated county of Boulder, Colorado, for which 100-year floodplain data and corresponding elevations or profiles are available and which have been designated and approved by the State Water Conservation Board. The 1965 map relied on by staff does not reflect the floodplain as approved by the State Water Conservation Board when HB 1041 took effect in May of 1974. In 1969, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers completed its first floodplain information report for Boulder Creek and South Boulder Creek. The report describes generally the areas of South Boulder Creek that would be inundated by the intermediate regional flood. It also describes the location of Gross Reservoir and its role in reducing peak flows on South Boulder Creek. Based on the description in this 1969 study by the Army Corps of Engineers, it's clear that Gross Dam and Reservoir were in the floodway in 1969, just as they are today. In 1970, the Colorado Water Conservation Board adopted a resolution designating and approving as flood hazard areas those areas described as being inundated by an intermediate regional flood as set forth in this 1969 report. Under both state law, which authorizes the CWCB to make such designations, and the Boulder County zoning code itself, it's the CWCB that determines what land is within the flood regulatory area and subject to flood regulatory area zoning. Second, I believe staff incorrectly concludes that only those areas shown on the 1965 map are within the flood overlay zoning. Rather, if you look at Paragraph 3.2, it indicates that this is a description and that the description shall include areas delineated on maps and profiles for the 100-year floodplain limits for the watercourses in Boulder County. So while presumably, everything shown on the 1965 map would have been included, it's not that 1965 map that is determinative. It's the Colorado Water Conservation Board resolution that determines what is within a flood regulatory area. The staff report also states that dams and reservoirs were not a use by right and that additional planning, commission, review and approval would have been required. But we have to go back to what the state law provides. The question under the zone land exemption is whether the development or activity is to be on land which has been zoned by the appropriate local government for the use contemplated by such development or activity. There's no question here that the flood hazard area zoning expressly authorized dams. Remember, the key word is "shall." Dams are one of the uses that shall be permitted. Whether or not there may have been additional process required to approve particular structures or particular designs doesn't change the fact that the land was zoned for the contemplated use as of May 1974. While not in the staff report, you might also hear an argument that even if dams were allowed, the county did not permit reservoirs as a use by right within flood regulatory areas. And let me be clear, the zoning code at that time didn't specifically speak to reservoirs. There is no zone in which they were expressly allowed nor is there any zone in which they were expressly prohibited. But understand the essential function of a dam is to impound water. Thus, it would have been meaningless to allow dams without allowing water to be stored behind them. Thus, the only logical reading of the code is that by allowing dams in flood regulatory areas, your predecessors intended an authorization to store water behind them as well. Finally, you may hear an argument that even if a portion of the dam is within the 100-year floodplain, some of it is outside the zone overlay. And again, the zoning code in effect at the time did not expressly address the situation or the scenario in which a structure is partly in and partly out of a floodplain. But in the interest of protecting public safety, I have to believe that your predecessors would have wanted a consistent standard to apply to such structures. Thus, to give intent to the 1969 zoning code, it should be read to apply to the entirety of a structure, even if part of the structure is in and part of it is out of a floodplain. Today's zoning code does address this situation expressly. Specifically, Section 4-402 makes clear that if a building or structure lies partly within the flood overlay district, then the flood overlay district provisions apply to the entire building or structure. Again, this makes intuitive sense. Let me close where my colleague Mike King started, by reiterating that we are committed to doing this project. Our customers need us to complete the Gross Reservoir Expansion Project. And we are equally committed to doing so in a way that benefits the environment and respects the needs and concerns of our Boulder County neighbors. We will continue to listen to Boulder County residents and search for even more ways to incorporate their feedback to minimize the impacts of our construction work, just as we have done by opting for an onsite quarry, to significantly reduce truck trips, and just as we have done by committed to a hauling schedule that will enhance safety and minimize inconvenience for neighbors of our dam. With or without a 1041 permit requirement, we will continue to seek your input and collaboration, just as we have done with the city of Boulder, the city of Lafayette, Grand County and many other Colorado communities, so that this project benefits not only our customers but also the environment and those communities we touch. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.